All right, now we're back on the agenda. Next item, please.
Approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meetings. Finance Committee meeting, August 19, 2019, Board Report 19-22. Building Insight Committee meeting, August 19, 2019, Board Report 19-23. Policy Committee meeting, August 19, 2019, Board Report 19-24. Regular P-12 meeting, August 19, 2019, Board Report 19-25.
So move.
Support.
Are there any corrections, additions? Yes, Trustee Lane.
I have a problem with the minutes of the regular P-12 meeting at page 31. And I just want to explain this so that, and I don't really know how to explain it, so I ask everybody to consider on it. So at page 31, under Request for Information, it says, "Trustee Barry asked for a complete report about the teacher he spoke about with Superintendent Maleko." So I don't really, I went back and checked the tapes, and Mrs. Harris is really accurate, like usual. But I don't really know what that means. And I also want the minutes or this meeting to reflect that, I mean, we're not, there are some circumstances when it might be appropriate to ask for personnel information. But I don't, I just, I'm uncomfortable with this standing as if one trustee would get information about one employee. So I don't want it to read that Mary Lane got information about Joe Smith. So I want that to be clear, that that's not the case. The way it reads, it sounds a little bit, I don't know how other people read it, but this did come up the previous couple of meetings about requests for information. So if we have, I mean, we all ask for information, and it's appropriate for our jobs. But there's different kinds of requests for information. A full report and analysis could take dozens of hours to produce. A request for information or clarification, a little bit of data, might take 15 minutes or something. I'd like to suggest, and I would like my colleagues and Dr. Maleko and everyone else as well, to think about under what circumstances we might, would it be appropriate to have an ad hoc committee to review some requests for information? So that it's, and also, I don't know how this information is going to be distributed. I don't know whether there's going to be a written report. So there are legal issues here, in my opinion.
When it comes to personnel.
There's FERPA issues, there are contract issues, and I want to keep us away from that. So I'd like us to consider maybe an ad hoc committee to review particularly in-depth requests for information. So, that being said, I would, like anybody else's comments on the way, and of course, Trustee Barry is the most relevant person.
Yeah, now, so that we can separate out the different parts.
Sure. I've thrown a lot.
Yeah. Would, first, we're going to deal with the minutes themselves. Would you like, are you asking for a change in wording of this particular?
Well, I'd like to ask Trustee Barry for...
Yes, then I'm going to go to Trustee Barry.
I just don't want it to...
But is that what you're looking?
That is one issue, yeah. So I just don't want it to read as if Trustee Barry wants information about John Smith.
Is getting some private information about what one person...
Right, exactly. And I assume that the entire board, Dr. Maleko, would share what, if there is misconduct or if there's something that we're asking about because of an alleged misbehavior, then I would assume that would be shared with the entire board.
But normally, any personnel issues are handled privately rather than at a public board meeting.
Exact, oh, of course, of course.
Because of, yes, because of the nature of...
But I would ask Trustee Barry to clarify.
So, Trustee Barry?
I would strongly, strongly support an ad hoc committee. I think it's well, way overdue, because we always get these complaints, and we get, you know, reports, then they disappear. I would support you 150% on that. Everything I've received, I forwarded to President Petrokov and Dr. Maleko. Just that day, that particular day, I received a letter, somebody, and a constituent handed me a letter, and that's what I was referring to. Just like there were some accusations at the podium last meeting about students leaving one school, you know, going to another school, I thought this would be a perfect opportunity to say, hey, why don't you sit down with, you know, the boss here, and let's clear that up? You're making some accusations in a public meeting, and I guess this is a good opportunity for me to say, that meeting did take place, and it was a very productive meeting. We all heard from that gentleman that he was satisfied. So when you stand here in front of the camera and you make accusations, you know, you need to sit down and get the real facts. Okay? Back to that report, there were some accusations in those letters received. So that's why I asked for information. When I ask for information, I'm sure it will be shared with the whole board. That's, it's always been.
I mean, it would, yeah.
I need to ask for information from...
Except that wouldn't be a public dissemination of the information.
Oh, 100%. No, no, of course not, of course not.
So I guess what Trustee Lane is concerned about is if we leave this in the minutes as is, it's going to leave a question mark in the public eye, because they don't know what, and they're not going to know the outcome.
And 100% right. If they make the minutes, they're foible, you know. Trustee Lane is a veteran, she understands all this. Whatever needs to be done, I'm okay with. If we have to remove that from the minutes, I'm okay with that, as long as, you know, however you want to handle it.
Should we add that wording to, to say that this will be shared with them?
If it said it was a personnel matter, would that take care of it?
As soon as she started talking about that, it hit me right away, where you were going with this, and I respect that.
I mean, we're, it's still going to be available in the tapes.
So, yeah.
I mean, it isn't going to go away.
Sure.
From the history of what happened at that meeting.
Well, when the administration reports out, obviously, it's personnel matter, and it's not going to be confidential information. That's fully understood.
And can I just mention, too, that all that does go to board through the appropriate chain of command, which is through the HR level of confidential board documents that everyone would get. That's how we would handle, so we would always, that's just the normal procedure, and I think, as far as who gets it, I'm just speaking to, that, you know, if one person requests something, it may be on a Tuesday, but by the Thursday, everyone is getting all the information.
We all have seen it, yes.
If that report is available.
Yeah.
You know, so we may get it to that individual first, but eventually, and we've always done it this way.
Yes.
And I think that's a good way that boards operate, is that whatever's requested, all board members...
Every board member should, and I'm a firm believer in that. Information given to one should be shared with the entire board. Trustee Lane, how would you like to...
So I would propose something like, "Trustee Barry asked about a personnel matter." For a report on a personnel matter, which information will be produced?
Forthcoming. Okay. Yeah. All right, then. So are there any other, yes, trustee McDonald?
If you look on page eight of 32 in the regular board meeting minutes, there's a duplicate. Under Orders and Purchases, number four and number five are the same.
Yeah.
Oh, I always go through those.
Which page, trustee?
Page eight of 32.
Yeah. So that just needs to be deleted.
Yeah, one needs to be deleted. And then adjust the numberation.
I don't know that it needs to be deleted. It might have been that it was, double check what was on four and five on the previous one.
Was there something, yeah, different? And it was, the wrong one was inserted into five or four?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I make one more comment on that?
Yes.
Just going to HR on the other question. One of the things, too, and this is how the board gets it, is you would just get a brief summary when it's personnel, you know, student-related, and it's never the actual documents.
Right. We're not going to.
That would actually, and we've checked that with legal, that came up, I think, a couple of years ago. It would really, it would be a certain circumstance that the board would need it, and that would then need to be a vote of the board to get that. So what the board gets is like a summary. It's not the actual personal documents. And some documents, we can't turn over anyway, if it's health-related or other FERPA-related things. So just to clarify for the public that we're not handing over any, it's just documents that our legal counsel has been approved, that we're allowed to send it through that form. So I just wanted to clarify that, too.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate you doing that, because there have been questions in the past.
What would be the process to create that committee that Trustee Lane is referring to?
Since I, as board president, I would have to, that's under my responsibilities. So I can go ahead. Is there consensus amongst the board members?
I would support something like that.
That they would like to see an ad hoc, I mean, it's going to be one more committee, three people are going to have to be responsible to attend, although my suspicion is, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have to do, call it that often, and possibly, we'll put some guidelines to it to kind of streamline it.
True.
And have some criteria to move things through that committee, as opposed to having it done here. I don't want to eliminate the use of a public board meeting for requests for information either, when something comes up and we need to ask for that information quickly. Like I said at the last meeting, the public board meeting is the best place, and that's why it's on the agenda, ask for future information and/or agenda items, because it gives an opportunity for the other board members to hear what a single board member has a concern of or a question about, and they can also contribute their thoughts at that moment. When you do individual requests for things other than for a quick clarification of information, you're leaving out the rest of the board in contributing to the request for information and a potential future action that we might be taking down the road. So that's why it's normally done at a public board meeting for something...
It's not going to be in lieu of, I mean, it's just...
No, it won't be in lieu of, no. And that's why I'm saying, we'll just have to make sure that the committee has some kind of understanding of, you know, what's something that you can just, you know, quickly move through, or something that needs to go through the committee to make sure that it's appropriate. Trustee McDonald?
That was, I wanted to clarify that, that it wouldn't be in lieu of.
In addition to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just to step along there.
All right. So we'll work on that. We might actually have to give it to the policy committee first to kind of look for a way to create another...
It's addressed.
Yeah.
It'll be up to you, you know, you just have to call it. It's addressed in the bylaws.
Yeah. It is addressed in the bylaws.
Sure.
All right, then. So, all right. Have we had all the corrections? All right. Those all in favor of the minutes as corrected? Say aye.
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 Any nays? All right, then. Please attach your unanimous roll.
Excite them, please.
Special reports, first strategic plan.
So we have Ms. Farage, Dr. Tonakliff, and Dr. Silvery, I believe, are coming forward. And this has been a very long working progress that was a community project, and I, before they get started, I just want to say, I think we're very proud of what we've accomplished under the strategic plan, and we had the huge renewal back in 2016. And now we appreciate the work of Ms. Farage, who's taken it, and I believe Dr. Patterson may actually be a part of it as well, who helped maybe her right hand, and they work very well together as a team, and we appreciate the work that was done. And again, this was a community, it was stakeholders, it was students, it was community members, and it was a very excellent process from what I saw. And it was just a revamping. It wasn't a fresh, scratch everything like the last time, and I believe the board trustees...
The last one was...
It was a lot of work.
Intense.
It was, it was still a lot of work, but at least we had a basis to start.
Right.
So, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Most important thing about the previous plan, which the timeline was 2016 to 2018, 19, it was focused and it was actionable. So we didn't want to do away with everything good that we were doing and start from scratch, which made our consultants' job much harder. We really appreciate their support, so I'd like to introduce Dr. Tonakliff and Mr. John Silvery, our consultants from Michigan Leadership Institute.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you for being here today. Okay, so again, our plan focused on implementation, the previous plan, and we tied actions to the strategic goals. Whatever it is we did in our schools and at the district level, we made sure we aligned to what the goal said, and we invited the principals to do the same through many sessions that we've held in general admin. If you notice, our board brief are referenced with the action, with the strategic plan goals, and that was, of course, the push from Dr. Maleko all the time. We wanted to make sure we create a process that builds on the excellent tradition that we've established, as mentioned before, while we worked with the current plan in mind. We still identified our powerful practices. We are never perfect, we always have work to do, and we know that we have a lot of opportunities for improvement. However, we did not follow a predetermined or canned process or template to create a new plan. Note that our vision and mission in the new plan remain the same, and when we asked our stakeholders through surveys, an overwhelming majority of those who took the survey wanted to keep the same vision and mission, and especially what you've heard about the vision and how we branded it. So it's a memorable vision.
I was going to say, you'd have some very disappointed people if you got rid of the vision statement.
The Jonas Brothers for one, and Ms. Lutzick.
Okay, so the timeline that we followed for the process was that we did our research. Dr. Patterson, myself, and Ms. Hilda Irani, we did interviews for different firms to make sure that we have the right source for us to carry the process. And we found some great stuff with one firm versus some weaknesses with other firms. And at the end, we selected Michigan Leadership Institute. You can see the names of the firms that we've interviewed on the right slide, on the next slide. But what we did is, we asked a lot of questions, and we made sure that if one piece was missing from one, the one that we selected, they were able to meet our needs and work with us to make sure that we filled all those needs. So we started about 10 months ago, and we interviewed the firms for about three months. We selected the same questionnaire that Dr. Patterson, myself, and Ms. Irani worked on, and we asked the same questions and made sure that we were able to compare what we wanted to select. We did a press release, invited stakeholders, and we made sure that our stakeholders came from all different walks of life in the community, professionals, post-secondary, and we'll go over that briefly. And then we started the revision with the community forums with the support of our consultants. And then today, we have the final product that we're asking you to approve after we go over the details.
And that would go on the agenda for next month, please.
Right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm John Silvery. I'm a retired educator, former superintendent, currently the regional president for Southeast Michigan for Michigan Leadership Institute. My colleague, Dr. Steve Tonakliff, is here as well. Steve's the executive director of the Michigan Leadership Institute, and also serves as the associate superintendent of the Genesee Intermediate School District currently. Before I go on to this, I just, I do want to say, before we neglect to do so, what a pleasure it's been to be here and working over this course of time with not only your administrative staff members, but stakeholders as well. The dedication they exhibited, enthusiasm for the work, and commitment to doing it well and getting it right has been really very impressive. So it's, it's been intensive, but it's made it a real pleasure for us. So we come to you with extensive experience in strategic planning. The districts you see on the slide are those that we've worked with to assist them with their strategic planning processes over the course of the last three years. Lots of different types of districts, large districts, small, urban, suburban, rural, you name it. It's given us great experience that we can come and apply here. And we were really pleased especially to come to Dearborn, because it was Michigan Leadership Institute that worked with you folks the last time you went through a strategic planning process, and especially given that you were updating the previous plan. It was a real pleasure for us to be asked back, and a real privilege as well. So we went through really quite a process of determining how to go forward with this. In spite of all of our experience, I have to say, too, that taking an existing plan and just kind of revising and updating it is really a unique approach. But to your credit, the reason that that was the right approach to take was because you had adopted and implemented the previous plan with such fidelity. There are times that districts go through the process, develop a plan, and it kind of sits to the side.
And we've been there, trust me.
Oh, I think many, many districts have been, but it's quite evident that that has not been the case here.
This one.
That's absolutely true. So it was the right approach to say, well, okay, so how do we go about the process of taking what you have been working with and updating to make sure that it's relevant and still meets your needs going forward? So this was foundational work that we did with members of your leadership team, led by Fatmi. And we looked, we titled it Strategic Renovations. It is, renovations can be a little bit tricky sometimes, that's what this was for us. We wanted to make sure that we honored the past, recognized the present, and realized the future of the district. So this foundational work that I referred to was, was to provide a clarity of focus and language in the plan, to avoid the kitchen sink scenario, which is a danger where you throw everything into it, and then there's so much there, you don't really know what's important and what to prioritize. To provide that clarity of purpose while we're going about this work, to ensure consistency throughout the document, too, even simply in terms of the language that's being used, recognizing the fluidity of the system, things aren't static, and the one thing that's certain in a school district is change. And we looked at impact, implementation, and accountability. What are the goals for impact, the strategies for implementation, and the process for accountability? So this was work we did, again, foundational, before we then brought stakeholders into the process, which Steve will speak to.
Thank you. And again, thank you for the opportunity to work with Dearborn Public Schools. It really has been a pleasure. So I'm just going to walk you through the process. I know a couple of you were a part of the process, appreciate Dr. Maleko being a part of, active participant in the process as well. So what we do is, we try to avoid this urge that most districts have to, especially if you've had a successful strategic plan, to sit down in a small group and say, well, here's what we would do next, and you get the group of leadership together, and they already have strategies that they want to jump in, the next silver bullet, the next, you know, plan that they want to unveil and throw it into an existing strategic plan. So to avoid that, we went through a laborious process of engaging a lot of stakeholders. You can see we had three stakeholder forums. We invited, I think, about 70 to 80 different community members. Ms. Farage was diligent in identifying a very good cross-section of your entire school community. I was particularly impressed with the engagement of students in the process, which was fun to have. But we brought this group together three different times to ensure that we were not just listening just to the one group of administrators, but instead trying to find out what your community really thought. So we follow a process of triangulating data, and we use both qualitative and quantitative data in this process. So the first part is a stakeholder forum. So we bring the groups together. Those who are part of it know that we use kind of a different process to try to just glean information about why we exist as a community, what we're trying to accomplish, and how we're going to go about accomplishing it. We also take a strong look at surveys. So we provided the district, again, with Ms. Farage and her leadership, with two different surveys, one for staff and one for the community. And then we also partner with IDEXX, who puts together a very specific report for Dearborn Public Schools, and those pieces of information you might need in your strategic planning work. So this just gives you a quick sense of, when we come together with those group of community stakeholders, we are getting a sense for why they, why they think Dearborn Public Schools is so special. And that's the piece here where you can see community and diversity really come forward. We also talk about what it is that we do that makes us different than, than other districts. That's the next slide, or piece of the slide to the right. And then all the way over to how we make sure that students are achieving, you know, see what really jumped out from all of the different stakeholders was the focus that we have on relationships with students. And then on the left, we also talk about what stands in our way, and what will stand in our way over the next three to five years in terms of barriers to our success. And you can see there, you know, obviously, a number of things that we all lament across the state in terms of funding, time, testing, things of that nature. I share that just as a quick example of the qualitative data that we pull from those community stakeholders. We then take a look at all of those individuals who can't be a part of all the stakeholder forums. So you can see just fewer than 1,000 different respondents to two different surveys. My office then goes through and analyzes all of that work, hundreds and hundreds of pages of analysis for those surveys, to get a true sense of, again, not just what a small group of people thinks we ought to do next, but it said, what does our entire community think about Dearborn Public Schools and our next steps? Give you a quick sense of some of the questions that we ask, some of the data that we collect. Some of them are simple. As Ms. Raj already mentioned, we ask some simple questions like, how do you feel about the mission? How do you feel about the vision? Overwhelmingly, community and staff, or staff and community members overwhelmingly support both the mission and the vision statement. So that, that gave us data to support. Let's move forward and leave those where they're at. But again, taking a look at both qualitative and quantitative data to get a sense for how our community feels about where we're at. And the last piece, as I mentioned, we do partner with IDEXX to get a strong analysis of, and this will give you a quick sense of what we take a look at, obviously, your enrollment trends, which I'm sure you're familiar with, the demographic information about our students and our district as a whole, our revenue expenditures, where we're spending the money, and what we can look to in terms of revenue, and then, of course, most importantly, our student achievement data. We combine all of that information to then sit back down with our, with the group of community stakeholders, and then afterwards with the leadership team to say, given everything that we know, now let's talk about goals and strategies to move forward as a district. So again, it's a laborious process, but we believe it's a process that includes all stakeholders, and it really gives us a sense of what direction do we want to take next. So that leads us to the last piece of the plan.
So what we tried to do with our revisions is, we wanted to make sure that we were communicating the big picture of what we were looking at. We wanted to, we, I think we have an example in here of, we wanted to simplify it to a one-page plan, to make it something that's easily understood by all stakeholders, something that's very simple and to the point. And what we did is, we aligned all of our work under four focus areas. Teaching and learning, which is, you know, a big part of our work, you know, students and learning. Human resources, stakeholder engagement, and then facilities and infrastructure. And as we were working through this, I know Steve just mentioned not wanting to throw everything, throw the whole kitchen sink into the plan. So we tried to limit ourselves to three measurable goals for each focus area, and then three high-leverage strategies for each of those goals. And there might be one more or one less in a few of the areas, but we really tried to keep it to a very simple structure. And so each of our goals was written as a SMART goal, so we wanted it to be something that's measurable, that has numbers attached to it with measurable goals within the timeline of this plan. And then for each of our strategies, which are things that we're going to implement to try to get to those SMART goals, we're going to be collecting evidence that we're implementing those with fidelity, that we're doing what we need to, and then reviewing those on a timeline. So while we have the very simple plan, we also have along with that all of the metrics that we're going to be following along as well. And we're in the process of collecting all that baseline data and setting the goals for, for each of those areas in the plan.
We also have created a one pager that includes the district's points of pride. It's not public yet, because it has one specific award that's not public, so we're not going to show it tonight. And that has the strategic plan summary on the lower part, and then the points of pride of the district on top. And again, this is with support of Michigan Leadership Institute, so we thank them for that. Dr. Patterson mentioned that we had the strategies, the goals, and also the activities. We do have personnel listed in the plan on who is responsible, what is the accountability piece, who is responsible to making sure that this is happening. And we are in the process with meeting with different departments to make sure that the goals are also measured numerically. So we have those specific tools for that. I'd like to, before we open to questions, I'd like to thank everyone who took part of, in this important work, specifically the steering committee. If they are here, can you please stand to be recognized? The steering committee did a lot of work on this. We've met several times revising the old plan and coming up with a new language and drafting also the new language. Also, I want to thank Dr. Patterson again for his unwavering support, not only in the strategic plan, but in every department that we ask him to assist. So thank you again, Dr. Patterson. Ms. Joanne here, it's Ms. Hilda Irani, and Ms. Waafa Malah for their, for their support during this process. I would also like to thank Mr. Patterson for, they use their friend... I would also like to thank Mr. Patterson for, for the user-friendly version that he did on the webpage, for anyone that can reference, it's very simple, and they can do the drop-down, look at each goal and the strategies that go along. I have also did a QR code for that at the end of our presentation, so if you scan the QR code, you will be, it will connect you to the district's version of the strategic plan. Finally, thanks to this board and to Dr. Maleko, in fact, we felt that also this is going to be actionable as well, because every single cabinet meeting which happens bi-weekly, we did an update on where we are in the process, what we've accomplished, and we opened it for input. Administrators in the district, instructional and non-instructional, who were not on the committee, as well as those who were, were involved in a thorough session, looking at all the goals and strategies, and giving us their feedback, which we took over the summer, and we looked at their input, and we revised accordingly. So all stakeholders were heavily involved in this plan. Thank you, everyone. Any questions? We're opening for questions.
Are there any questions, Dr. Mead?
I don't have any questions, I'm just, I'm just.
Yes, I know you love the strategic plan.
Well, I think the board's most important responsibility is to hire a superintendent to make sure that we don't overspend or underspend, but having a strategic plan is really critical for the board, because then we can back away and let the administration and the staff and faculty implement this strategic plan. I'm really impressed with the simplicity. The last strategic plan was too cumbersome, but it was on the right track. It, it actually specified specific goals that are measurable, achievable, et cetera, that relate to the mission of the college, of, of the school system. But also, it added that somebody is responsible. So not only is there a strategic plan, each specific goal is measurable and achievable, but there's also a strategy for how to achieve that goal, and there's also a person or a department responsible for doing it. So this also makes it easier for the superintendent. Everybody knows what the work is of, of the school system. So this is very, very critical that we pay a specific attention to this, and when we vote for it, that's the work for the people, who the superintendent and everybody in the school system to do. So I just, I really commend you, all of you, for really a super strategic plan. Thank you very much.
I think Dr. Mead is happy. No, thank you for your leadership on this.
Are there any other questions?
Not a question, just a comment, I want to thank Michigan Leadership Institute, the entire committee, and I remember it was about a year and a half ago when we had our advanced ed came, and talked about our school improvement process being, and, and our department being second to none. Then last summer, we were rated as one of the forty-five most innovative districts based on that process by district administration, and I went to Chicago for an award. Well, that is the team, but it's also, let's give Ms. Farage a big round of applause for her leadership.
Trustee McDonald?
I also am very impressed with the work that you've done, and thank you for your leadership on this, and everybody that was involved. I really, really like the one-pager. It's full of really good information, it's easy to understand, it's right there at your fingertips. I know it's not, we can't.
Public yet.
Public, yeah, it's not public yet, but when it does become public, where is this going to be, what are you going to do with it? Are you going to make posters, is it going to be around the district, are you going to?
Yes, this will be distributed to the schools, it will be available in the communication office to the public when we hire new teachers, just, it's a story about our district, which is really something good to show, and we're very proud of it.
I think everybody needs to see it, it's really wonderful, but not yet.
Well, and quite frankly, I know that on our webpage, it's still the old strategic plan, because we haven't voted and adopted the new one. How quickly are we ready to roll out the new version on the? Patterson?
Can you say the word? Three minutes, we're ready to go.
All right.
Want to make sure, because sometimes that lag of transferring.
To the new information on, on a lot of these sites, so I just want to make sure that people will know what we're talking about, and be able to actually see it.
So we just, we are adding the QR code to the one-pager, so people, when they scan it, it goes to the webpage.
Unless you like me and have a flip phone, anyway, I don't do anything, so.
Can I just add one more thing too? Because my, and I know, Dr. Mead, you, you helped me over time, but the whole board is, my goals then get directly linked to the strategic plan, so you will be getting a draft, and normally you, you approve my goals by October, so you would, you didn't get it as soon this year, because obviously the whole plan has changed, so I'm waiting for that.
We'll forgive you.
And I'm working on the draft of that document, so.
We, we know it's coming. All right, then, any other questions? Thank you very much for the report. All right.